I'm in the 37th La Jezza Turn Guam is called to order. Thank you for your patience, colleagues. We had some serious audio difficulties this morning, so we are beginning late. It is 9:40, 9:35 right now. Majority Leader Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Sidoos Masi, good morning, Madam Speaker and colleagues. I move to waive notwithstanding section 1. 1.02 Sessions of La Jezza Turn Guam, H1 Privileges of the floor. Persons allowed to, persons allowed to allow the students of Ocean View Middle School onto the session floor.
On that motion to waive notwithstanding the rules, is there any objection?
No objection.
Hearing no objection, motion carries. For the prayer, we recognize our legislative chaplain, Father Paul Golf again. We kindly lead us in prayer. Please rise. Can we please get a microphone?
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Almighty God, and Lord of all, who have tasked us to participate in shepherding your people. We employ your mercy and desire that you send your Holy Spirit and have your Holy Spirit permeate in all of us here in this sacred hall. Open our minds to see you and the people we serve. To see you in the homeless throughout our island. To see you in the hungry throughout our island. To see you in those living in darkness throughout our island. To see you in those in need of healing throughout our island. For you came to comfort the afflicted and to afflict the comfortable. Lord, when we are hungry, give us those in need of food. When we are thirsty, send us those needing a drink. When we are grieving, offer us people to console. When our crosses grow heavy, let us carry another's cross. When we think only of ourselves, draw our thoughts to another. That our lives reflect the very essence of you, who are nothing else but love. And be reminded that our work here is to will and ensure nothing but the good for our people. Especially those in dire need. We ask this through Christ our Lord. The Lord be with you. Amen. Almighty God bless you, the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Sidoos Masi, Father. To express a never-ending and never-forgotten gratitude by the people of Guam, the legislature recognizes recipients of himaladan mastakilu na sacrifisu on a display in the Guam Congress Building and during each of its sessions. For the recognition of a recipient of himaladan mastakilu na sacrifisu, Senator Canata, you are recognized.
On behalf of a grateful island and country, we honor Private First Class Ronald Perez Costito and the family of Private First Class Ronald Perez Costito for making the ultimate sacrifice in service and defense of our island and country.
Sidoos Masi. We will now recognize the students of Ocean View Middle School. Thank you for being here. And they will kindly lead us in the recitation of the, sorry, of the singing of the Guam hymn in Chamorro, the singing of the national anthem, and the recitation of the Inifresi. Sidoos Masi, again to the students from Ocean View Middle School. Please be seated. Clerks, please take the roll call.
Senator Barnett. Senator Blas. Senator Brown. Senator Duñez. Senator Fisher. Senator Luhon. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Senator Parkinson. Senator Perez. Senator Canata. Senator Sinagustin. Senator Siniklis. Senator Shelton. Senator Titegri. Speaker Terlahi. Madam Speaker, there is a quorum.
Sidoos Masi, clerks. Majority Leader Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Sidoos Masi, Madam Speaker, I move to excuse members not present for today's session.
On that motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Majority Leader Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Sidoos Masi, Madam Speaker, I move to approve Legislative Journals dated October 23rd, 2023, and November 3rd, 2023, subject to corrections.
These journals are located on the drive, according to the clerk. On the motion to approve the Legislative Journals dated October 23 and November 3, subject to corrections, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Sidoos Masi, Madam Speaker, there are communications and petitions, and I move that they be appended to today's Session Journal.
On that motion to append communications and petitions, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Majority Leader Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Sidoos Masi, Madam Speaker, there are messages from Imega, Hagen, Guam, and I move that they be appended to today's Session Journal.
On that motion to append messages, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Majority Leader Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Sidoos Masi, Madam Speaker, there are reports of standing committees, and I move that they also be appended to today's Session Journal.
On that motion to append reports of standing committees, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Majority Leader Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, there are no reports of select committees. Madam Speaker, I move that bills introduced, bills, bill numbers 193-37 LS through 200-37 LS and 201-37 COR through 204-37 COR, and resolutions introduced, resolution numbers 228-37 LS through 240-37 LS and 241-37 COR through 256-37 COR be deemed to have been given their first reading.
On that motion to deem bills and resolutions having been given their first reading, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We are now under motions. Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Sidoos Masi, Madam Speaker, I move that all congratulatory, commendatory, and condolence resolutions introduced today and for the remainder of this legislative session be considered first read and adopted to allow the Legislative Council to make technical corrections and to add all senators as co-sponsors.
On that motion, is there any objection?
No objection.
Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're still under motions. Are there any motions? Seeing no motions, we will proceed to legislative concurrence. Majority Leader Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Sidoos Masi, Madam Speaker, I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture, the nomination of Edgar T. Aguilar to serve as a member of the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority Board of Trustees with the recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion regarding the nomination of Edgar T. Aguilar, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Majority, Senator Barnett, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place in the voting file from the Committee on Education, Public Safety, and the Arts, the nomination of Fred E. Berdalio Jr. to serve as the Director of the Department of Corrections with the recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion regarding the nomination of Fred E. Berdalio Jr., is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. All right, we've exhausted our legislative concurrence. And we are now on consent calendar. There are no items. So we will begin, oh, majority, or we will begin now with second reading. The first bill on second reading is the most, bill number two. Senator Titegri, you are recognized.
Sidoos Masi, Madam Speaker. Good afternoon to my colleagues. I hope you had a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday four-day weekend. I know it's hard to get back into the groove of it after being gone for four days, but I'm sure the people of Guam rely on us. So that being said, Madam Speaker, I'd like to introduce Bill 2-37. And Madam Spoken, Madam Speaker, I motion to place Bill 2-37 as amended, which is an act to add a new section 13108A to Chapter 13, Title 12, Guam Code annotated relative to creating a special cost of living task force. Introduced by myself, Speaker Teresa Terlahi yourself, Minority Leader Frank, Senator Frank Blas Jr., Senator Sabina Perez, Senator Joanne Brown, Senator Chris Barnett, Senator Tom Fisher, and Senator Dwayne Siniklis, onto the third reading file and to allow myself as well as my colleagues' voices to be heard. Please proceed. Colleagues. Session is a time to discuss and debate our ideas, our work, our legislation, our solutions that are at hand. Lately, money, hard times have been the forefront of our people's challenges. Session is a time where we need to address these issues. Making ends meet, paying rent, utilities, and phone bills in one paycheck is a luxury few families know. It's a constant concern for government of Guam retirees living on a fixed income. These retirees increasingly are spending more money on healthcare, medicines, visits to physicians, and they're spending more at the grocery stores and at restaurants. Their buying power is significantly weaker than it was just a few short years ago. It's the harsh reality in our community. Especially to those who have spent their lives and careers in government service. Once upon a time, government of Guam jobs were the most sought-after job from here to the mainland because of the retirement plan. That has not been the case since the 1980s. When we went from a DB plan to a DC plan, many of our children who have gone off-island to seek higher education and personal training realized that benefits are more instrumental to their future. Benefits. We are seeing more of our community leaving for jobs that provide retirement security. The point is, we need to keep pace and improve what attracts today's workforce. Our current 5,624-plus government of Guam retirees matter. Don't disrespect what they have done for Guam by refusing to even discuss annual COLA adjustments that would actually help them. Everywhere else in our nation has a formula. Our people deserve our best efforts to establish, to be established right here at home. Bill 2-37 is not just another of those useless idealistic task forces or committees that fall to the wayside. There is experts who provided input during the roundtable. All agree that a true COLA system is needed, and they are willing to participate and contribute towards such a system. Madam Speaker, I'm open to ideas that will make Bill 2-37 as amended to better improve and help our retirees. They've been asking for this, and they've been praying for this for years. This amendment, Madam Speaker, if I may, it has been, it has been amended. Most of my colleagues have recognized this bill where it had, basically, I wanted to put everything in it from a sliding scale to, you know, adjustments. But I realized this is a much bigger, something that really needs to, for us to sit down and have the experts, not senators. Any of us don't have that kind of background in economics. But have the experts come in and find a solution, a formula, a simple formula that our retirees deserve. So I thank you, and I look forward to my colleagues, any questions they have or comments that will make this even a better bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, is there anyone who'd like to be recognized on the bill as amended by the committee on the bill? If not, I guess the senator may close on the bill.
Oh, it's beginning to look like Christmas. That being said, Madam Speaker, Bill 2 is the starting part for, a starting point of our commitment to our retirees and a responsible course of action. An example for future legislatures to follow. No more random dollar amounts for COLA pay at election time. We need to stop thinking that this is a Christmas bonus and provide a true cost of living adjustment to our retirees. This must be the goal. It's a legal commitment we have to our retirees. I've spoken with our local economic experts and the government of Retirement Fund leadership who have indicated their support. And I seek my colleagues' support here in this session. What's important now is that we make this legal commitment to building a dignified, supportive, and sustainable COLA policy for Gov-Guam retirees. Thank you, Madam Speaker, and ask that Bill 2-37 be moved to the voting file. Sidoos Masi.
Sidoos Masi, on the motion to place Bill number 2-37 as amended by the committee to the voting file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're now on Bill number 36-37 COR. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place substitute bill or to accept substitute bill 36-37.
All right, there's a bill on the drive. It's titled "As Amended by the Committee and Substituted on the Floor." There's a motion to accept that version of the bill as substituted on the floor. Is there any objection to that motion? Seeing no objection, motion carries. On the substitute bill, Senator Perez, you are recognized.
I move to place substitute bill 36-37 on to the third reading file, and I wish to discuss.
Please proceed.
Substitute Bill 36-37 creates a designation of critical procurement contract and implements a temporary expedited process specific to resolving protests arising from the solicitation or awarding of these contracts. The recent influx of federal funding initiatives, including the American Rescue Plan Act, the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, the Bipolar the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, the bipartisan infrastructure law, and Inflation Reduction Act, have revealed the need for updates to our procurement laws in order to update our procurement laws. In order to qualify as a critical procurement contract, all the following criteria must be met. The solicitation is one which is integral to the timing of the planning, development, construction, financing, or completion of a major public infrastructure or capital improvement project. The contract is reasonably expected to cost five million dollars or more, and the identified funding, the required labor available, or required materials, is restricted or becomes restricted to the material detriment of the procuring agency. Substitute Bill Thirty-six thirty-seven proposes that critical procurement contracts must be designated by the Chief Procurement Officer, Director of Department of Public Works, or the governing board of the procuring agency, and that all prospective bidders, offerers, or contractors shall acknowledge and sign an affidavit that they are aware of and agree to abide by the critical procurement terms, deadlines, rules, and regulations. Substitute Bill Thirty-six thirty-seven would streamline the protest procedure by making the decision of the public auditor to be final and conclusive with no right of appeal or judicial review, and the automatic stays shall be lifted. It would require the promulgation of rules and regs by the Policy Office, except for the part where there are administrative review through the public auditor, which will be done by the public auditor. Although protests are a central part of the procurement process, Substitute Bill Thirty-six thirty-seven was created in response to concerns of the delay and inability to accomplish much-needed capital improvement projects due to lengthy protests, such as the one that GPA highlighted in the public hearing, in which protest was made, and it took almost one and a half years. In the end, the protest was sustained, and, I'm sorry, the protest was affirmed, but in the meantime, the vendor basically canceled the contract because the cost went too high. And so, it's important that, you know, we amend our bills, our laws, in order to ensure that we don't lose the opportunity of much-needed capital improvement projects. And so, it's important also with the potential of added challenge of looming expiration of federal funding, which currently exists with the American Rescue Plan Act, the Infrastructure and Jobs Act, Inflation Reduction Act, which provides much-needed funding for deferred capital improvement projects. Bill Thirty-six thirty-seven proposes to codify the expedited process and alleviate delays. Like our companion bills that was passed in this body, there will be a repealer clause when the federal grants expire. And so, the expiration date was aligned with the Infrastructure and Jobs Act. So, in that particular law, twenty twenty-six is when the funds are expected to be provided, and then agencies will have four years for them to accomplish those capital improvement projects, which takes time to complete. And so, with this particular bill, it's aligned with that specific grant. This bill worked in close collaboration with stakeholders, and a lot of the input has been integrated into this current version, and I ask for my colleagues' support. Thank you.
Sisus Massey, Senator, on the bill, is there anyone who'd like to be recognized on the bill? Senator Blas, you are recognized.
Thank you, and good morning, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, I understand the intent of the bill, but, you know, there's a couple of concerns that I have with regard to the language and how it's set apart. First off, I wonder if the author of the bill can yield to a question that I have with regard to, let me find that. It's actually found on page three, line eleven and twelve, and my question is, where's the Policy Office?
Would the senator yield to the question? Would the sponsor yield to that question? We'll take a one-minute recess, Senator. We're back from recess. Senator Blas had asked if Senator Perez would yield, sponsor the bill. Would you, Senator, would you yield to the question?
Yes, I do. So, I was researching statute as well as who currently are the members. So, the Policy Office wasn't impaneled for a long time until Governor Lou Liangoro impaneled them. And so, in statute, it basically says the membership of the Policy Office shall consist of three officers or employees of the government of Guam appointed by the governor, the Director of Public Works, Director of Administration, who shall serve as the chairperson. None of the three members appointed by the governor shall act concurrently as procurement officer, nor shall any of such members or subordinates unless such members are directors of agencies, act as a procurement officer. So, that is a membership. So, in looking at the PPOs or the Policy Office memos, yeah, I was trying to find who currently is on there. My understanding is Director Byrne, obviously, a Director Ariola, and I'm trying to find the most updated version to confirm the rest, because I know some membership has changed since. But I can find that answer with more time.
Senator Blas, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, obviously, apparently, you know, first off, I appreciate the proactiveness of the author in being able to put this bill together so that they can, assumably, really not have to take effect until twenty twenty-six, if I was, okay, unless I can be corrected on that. You know, I just am a little concerned, though, about whether or not, you know, this is still an active board or still an active office. Is it an office, or is it a board, or is it a panel? Go ahead.
Would you like this, Senator Perez, would you?
So, I found the most recent documents from the Policy Office. So, now, there are four members, Director Byrne, Stephanie Flores, Vincent Ariola, and Yukari Hachinova. Those are the members currently on the Policy Office Board. And so, it is impaneled. It's currently impaneled.
Okay, and the reason why, you know, Madam Speaker, is the language here is in accordance with the regulations to be promulgated by the Policy Office. Is that, in fact, their mandate? Or are we placing this as a mandate on board that, you know, I'm just a little uncomfortable with that? Well, I, you know, when the author had articulated as to who the current members are of the board, who's answerable to who there, do they have the processes and the infrastructure necessary to be able to do this? And so, that's my first thanks with this, with this bill. And I'll work with the author in being able to try to see what we can do to make sure that this doesn't fall to the wayside, or we give something to an office or group of individuals, and they don't know who's going to be in charge, okay? And who's going to take on that responsibility of putting these regulations together? Secondly, normally, in the title of the bill, or in the first page of the bill, you would find what this bill is for. And, you know, it's not till you get to the last page of the bill with the automatic repeal that this bill was put together for a specific, for projects that may come from a specific fund, which is not going to be released until twenty twenty-six. However, if one looks at this bill and reads it, you can almost, it's almost like, okay, this is for every project henceforth that could cost five million dollars or more. Is that the case in this bill, or is this bill specifically for those projects that we anticipate that we're going to be able to do once the Infrastructure Investment Jobs Act's funds are released? I just don't want to be able to put out an ambiguous language, because although it says automatic repeal, it says that it's repealed effective December thirty-first, twenty thirty, okay, unless there's an extension for the Infrastructure Investment Job Act's fund, but it doesn't say that this is specific to projects for the Investment, for the Infrastructure Investment Act's fund. I can, right off the top of my head, think of five million dollar or more projects that is going to cost us five million dollars or more, one close to two-point-four billion dollars, okay? What are we doing with this? Okay, so, I don't know. That's my concern with this bill. While it appears it wants to restrict it to a certain thing, that's not what the language says. The language here says that the authorization for this expires in twenty thirty. It does not say that this authorization is just for, and if that is the case, then it should be in the front. If not, we're opening up a can of worms. I want to yield the rest of my, well, hold on to the rest of my time, just in case that there's some, I guess, clarity that can be brought by the author. Thank you.
Would the author yield?
Yes, I do, Madam Speaker, and thank you to the senator for those points. I'm open to amending the title to match the body in regards to a temporary protest process. In regards to the Procurement Policy Office, basically, in the different part of the bill, it states that the promulgation shall be in accordance with what's currently in law. So, if I can look at the citation, yeah, basically, it's pretty consistent. So, the Policy Office is involved in the promulgation of rules and regs, and that's their purview. The section in law, according to the bill, in the bill in Section Three, it states the Procurement Policy Office pursuant to five GCA, Section five-one-three-zero-A. So, it's already in statute, so they would be following what's in statute. And in regards to the title, I'm open to amending that to bring more clarity.
I think, Madam Speaker, just so that's not lost, and what my concern is, it's not just in the title, it's in the body of the bill. Again, is this bill intended for those expenditures that we can expect as a result of the Infrastructure Investment Act? Or is this bill for every project henceforth that's going to cost us five million dollars or more? Because as the way it's written right now, other than, okay, that's what's going to happen, and I'm not comfortable with that. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, Vice Speaker, you are recognized. On the bill.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on this measure, and as I want to say to the good author of this legislation that I support the intent and the efforts of this, maybe I'd like to, maybe just ask a question if she could yield. In this legislation, it says, I'm looking at how has or have the public auditor, his office, and stakeholders like local businesses responded to the bill's proposed language of having the elected auditor be the final decision-maker on this procurement protest with no opportunity to appeal to the courts? So, maybe if she would like to yield, because I just want clarity for that, and please, Madam Speaker, I know, I support the intent in giving that timeline, and this is something that we can look. So, just based... So just based on the section that's being cited, have the public auditor or his office and the stakeholders like the local businesses responded to the bill's proposal language?
Thank you, Senator. Would the sponsor yield to that question?
Yes, I do. So with this particular bill, in regards to having the public auditor have the final decision, I did not have them weigh on this one particular bill, but they have agreed on other bills that we passed in this body to accept the final decision, such as was done in one for the Department of Education. So they were accepting of being the decider, the final decider, as they have done in the past, you know, successfully, under the arrow of times.
Thank you, Senator. Your microphone.
I think, I think my effort and my concern on this, Madam Speaker, was, if I'm not mistaken, it may have been raised before about the language, cutting out the language regarding the judiciary. So I just want to make sure. And then maybe if I can just have a moment's recess so I can just get clarity for that, because I want to make sure that we're not taking from Peter to reverse back, all right, to give to Paul or what have you. So just want to see how I can help this effort move forward.
Thank you, Senator. Vice Speaker, one minute recess. We're back from recess. Vice Speaker, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for that brief recess and talking to the author of this legislation. I understand where the process was going, but the other thing that came to mind for me is that the bill automatically repeals this process for critical procurement by the end of 2030 citing the Federal Infrastructure and Investments Jobs Act. And if I may, Madam Speaker, I'd like to ask the author to explain the decision to not make this process for critical procurement permanent in law. So if she could yield to that.
Would the sponsor yield to that question? Senator Perez.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, the reason for that is I wanted to follow the same pattern that was used in the past when regards to any kind of streamlined protest procedures that are tied to federal grants. In all of those laws that were passed, there was a repealer in regards, in line with the grant, in line of the deadline of the grant. And so I wanted to ensure that with this change that we were following the same pattern.
Thank you, Senator. Vice Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Again, in those efforts, I have a question, Madam Speaker, just one more question, but if you can allow me just one minute to speak to the author, because I don't know if it should be a separate bill or not, but if you can just afford me one minute, thanks.
Sure, one minute recess. We're back from recess. Vice Speaker, you have the floor.
Thank you again, Madam Speaker, for giving me the brief moment's recess and the opportunity to ask the author of the legislations as it relates to the settlement component. And I truly appreciate the time that was provided to me. But again, Madam Speaker, I support the efforts of the intent, and I will continue to hear from my colleagues to see how we can facilitate this moving forward. So sisus massey.
Sisus massey. On the bill, Bill Number 36-37, substituted. Senator Fisher, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I too would like to address a question to the Senator who's offered this, and the question is as follows. What is the intention of the finality clause, sub F?
Would the Senator yield to that question? Would the sponsor yield?
Yes, thank you for the question. Basically, again, it's to ensure that the protest ends with a public auditor and there is no opportunity for judicial review. And this is the point about the issues that we are facing with a lot of these procurement protests is that it gets tied up in courts. And at that point, you know, like in the case of GPA, they were about to, they awarded a contract for a very important solar farm project. And it ended up that they were right, that the decision was affirmed, but in the end, the cost was too high, and so the vendor basically canceled that project. And so it kind of brought them back into, they had to restart, so GPA had to restart the bids. And so this, that's the purpose, is to ensure that the decision is final with the public auditor.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Fisher, you are recognized.
Yes, thank you, ma'am, and also thank you for the answer to the question. I would just make an observation about this, the finality, because these are contracts which are by nature large. They will be decided under this bill by the public auditor without benefit of discovery, without benefit of interrogatories, without benefit, and it must be presented within 14 days. I just, I'm thinking of a situation, for example, the airport. If we were to suppose that that concession contract was issued under this set of laws, a concession contract which is ultimately going to be worth well over $100 million, the impact of that contract, and we are going to allow one person to decide it, you know, all respect to the public auditor, but I assume that he would not want that authority without benefit of discovery. The appeals process to our judiciary is integral to the, our obligation to responsibly spend the public money. And I appreciate the fact that people do get very frustrated with the fact that things just seem to drag on and on in court, and that's true. They do tend to drag on and on in court, but that's appropriate. It's appropriate, you know? You know, the law moves slowly, but it moves towards proper results, and I think that's extraordinarily important when we're talking about the public purse. So I would just invite everyone to consider very carefully if they want a contract which is worth tens of millions of dollars not being subject to legal review. For example, you know, we've, this session, this House has been embroiled in conversations about a new hospital that is going to be in the multiple hundreds of millions of dollars, no matter where it's built. I would be very reluctant to submit the inevitable contract disputes which are going to arise. I'm just very reluctant to submit that to one person without the benefit of discovery. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you, Senator Fisher. On the bill, is there anyone else that'd like to speak on the bill? Senator Brown, you are recognized on the bill.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I certainly appreciate the questions and comments from our colleagues concerning this bill. But I think we need to recognize a challenge that we have, which is a creation of the government itself. I've never quite understood the procurement process that has, you know, 126-page checklist to go through. You know, that essentially strangleholds our ability as a government to function in some very critical areas. I think DOE is something, we see that every day. But if you've run an agency, it's a major challenge dealing with procurement. And the reality is also, we also have companies, they're known, they have a reputation. If they don't get the contract, that's automatic, because there's no penalty to them. There's no skin in the game for them. They don't lose anything by making sure that the company that was awarded the contract doesn't get it. And we've seen this repeat itself over and over again. It could be for construction of a building, it could be for goods, it could be for services, it could be for equipment, it could be for vehicles. And I'm not saying it's a perfect process, because obviously it's not. In some cases, we already know who's going to get the contract before the contracts are awarded. It's not a perfect process. But we're challenged here with a situation of we have this federal money available, it's not going to be available forever, in most cases, it's not going to be available too much longer. And it's our inability to go through this process that the government itself has created that makes it difficult to operate. It's public money, public money that in most cases don't get to get spent on what we need to spend it on, be it the construction, especially construction, things that take time. And that's where the challenge is, my colleagues. So I realize that we have some concerns. Certainly, we had that issue too, not too long ago here, dealing with the Department of Education and wanting to give them more flexibility, because the alternative meant that they were going to lose that federal money. Money that obviously we see every day is so desperately needed, because our government itself does not, even in this time of plenty, even in this time of $100 million excess as we talk about falling out of the sky, we still cannot take here the most basic needs of what we would like to see provided for our children. And that's just DOE. What about the rest of the government? What about all the other things that we need to construct? You know, the Simon Sanchez School that we often talk about, I mean, even till today, where are we? How long has it been since the typhoon? Six months, going on seven? Are we any further to even beginning construction? So that at some point, children that have yet to be born will have an opportunity to go to this school at some point? So that's the challenge. This is our own creation. It's our own creation that limits us. It's our own creation also that allows others, because, you know, we have unscrupulous people out there, you know, sad reality of life, but they do exist, take advantage of the situation, because we set it up to almost make it difficult to procure what we need. We allow these obstructions to get in our way, and also because of our own frailties, our own limitations in government, because sometimes you've got people that want to cook the procurement process to their advantage or make sure certain people, certain business interests get the contract, especially the big money contracts. Ooh, who's going to get that? Who's going to benefit from that? Who's going to get their cut from that? Sad reality. But we're in a situation here where I appreciate the efforts of the author of trying to find a way, under the circumstance, under the time limits that we have, to find a way that we can move forward when there are these type of protests, so that we can move on, so that we can actually get things done. You know, we criticize government, and yes, God, Lord knows, we've got our, you know, we have so many examples of where we fail, where we do miserably. But in the areas where we can succeed, where we can move forward, where we can take advantage of these funds that are only here for a limited time, we need to do something to help that process along, because this is money that we will lose, and it's money that our people will not benefit from. And that is a failure. That would be a big mistake to allow that to happen and do nothing, because we're so worried about the process. And the process itself is not pure and clean. We know that. But what is the alternative? Leave it as it is? Allow the protest, some of these protests continue on and on and on and on. Look at the airport. Look at YTK. Goodness, almost 20 years. 20 years of a public asset that you couldn't do anything with, because these things ended up in litigation. And then sometimes the companies that are involved almost think they own the house. Look at the airport, they're so timid. They can't even move, oh, we, we can't even get other vendors, because, you know, we're afraid. My goodness. That really isn't how government should run. I actually think we need to streamline the process and certainly tighten it in areas where you want to make sure no one's taking advantage of it, where we're not abusing the system so that some people unfairly profit, because they got the connect or whatever, it's their administration, whatever it is. You know, we've seen it happen over the years repeatedly. But I think we need to take advantage of the opportunity, because it is for a short time, it's a short window, to allow these issues to be addressed so that we can move on, we can get what it is that we need to procure and take advantage of these funds, because otherwise, guys, we might as well just send it back. And it's not money this legislature is going to be able to, you know, but then again, I don't know, maybe next time Mr. Carlson comes down here and tells us there's no money, now we got to wonder. Because now this whole financial accounting in the government's become a big joke to me, too. So colleagues, I understand your concern, and a good Lord knows, I have my share. But at the same time, I think we need to take advantage of these funds while we have them and not allow the external factors to determine the government agenda and the people's agenda, the public agenda of using these funds so that they can go to the benefit of our people. So with that, Madam Speaker, I definitely rise in support of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Brown. On the bill. Senator Barnett.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Yeah, I rise in support of the bill, and I definitely appreciate the concerns that the previous speakers have brought up that I'm sure the author will attempt to address with possible amendments. But yeah, the timeline of these funds, I think, warrants the justification of expediting of this process. And we did it for the Guam Department of Education, and I could see how it could work for these funds as well. And so again, I commend the author, you know, hearing after hearing, we all hear it, every committee. Procurement is such a big issue to so many in the government of Guam. And I question that, you know? Sometimes it seems like maybe they just don't know how to do it. But again, with these funds and the timeline that's ticking and the history that we've had and not being able to use federal funds that were given, again, I commend the author for doing this hard work. And I also commend the previous speakers and my colleagues for raising these concerns on this bill. on this, this bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Senator Barnett, on the bill.
Madam Speaker, on the main motion, I'll recognize you at this time.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you to the author of the bill. It's very clear, there are some agencies in the government that are getting kind of desperate to spend some of these federal funds. And the appeals are delaying their timeframe or even to spend ratepayers' funds. And the appeals truly delay the procurement. But I, I'm, I'm in favor of appeals generally because I find it's the only thing that's going to keep some of these agencies in line, right? Without corruption, without favoritism and truly going for value and benefit to the taxpayers of Guam, it's that appeal process. It's getting those who were not selected and some of the reasons, if you look through the records of why they weren't selected or what they're appealing rather, is, looks very legitimate, right? We have huge litigation because they say rules were not followed. And that's, to me, what we want not to happen. We want rules to be followed, so I want to make sure these people have that ability to call it out when necessary. I, I do, you know, of course, have to balance that with we are given some federal funding, the government of Guam, and we need to spend that in the timeframe that they have given us. And so while, you know, I, I am sometimes critical of these agencies for not planning properly or just getting really the ball rolling fast enough that we can handle the appeals in a timely manner. But I, that's what we have to weigh for this bill. And I'm, I'm going to admit, it's very difficult because I'm not generally in favor of a special procurement process. I mean, I know we've done it in the past, the legislatures have done it in the past, for very special federal funds. We have very special federal funds in front of us right now, that once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to use these or we lose them. So I guess I'd just like to hear from the sponsor, which agencies are we doing this for and which procurements? Are there particular procurements that we are trying to accommodate here? Or is this truly generally for all agencies, for any kind of procurement where the funding identified is restricted or the required labor available is restricted or the required materials is restricted? Because I agree with previous speakers that that can pretty much be met by any procurement, I would think, on Guam at this time. So if the sponsor would yield to that general question.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Senator Perez, would you like to yield to the speaker's inquiries? Please proceed.
Yes, I do yield. And so generally, this bill was created with the intent of GPA in mind, but as you can see, the language can apply to different agencies.
Speaker Chirlohi, does that answer?
Yeah, my question again would be, is there a reason why we are not going to make the bill apply only to GPA or apply only to those special funds such as ARP or the infrastructure funds? I think that's the one we're all very concerned with, those are the big ones. And for me, I would, I would not favor so much this language, required materials are restricted. I feel like that's, that's just going to let every procurement apply here or required labor available is restricted. I think Guam, we're going to find that labor is restricted, right, for almost every construction project. I don't know. If, if the author wouldn't mind to just yield to those questions as well. So what about limiting it just to GPA? Why are we not limiting it just to those federal funds that we know about? And, and, and why do we really need this, this other language? Is this requested by GPA? The restriction on materials, the restriction on labor, that that also qualifies you for this special procurement law?
Thank you, Speaker. Senator Perez, would you like to yield to that?
Yes, I do. And so there wasn't, when the, when the bill was created, there wasn't, or when there's a public hearing, there wasn't any objection to it, but I'm open to making it more specific to GPA. Yeah.
Speaker Chirlohi.
Yeah, there was any objection to the, the language itself.
Would, would you like for a moment's recess or?
Maybe in a little while. I have, I'd like to just follow, follow up with additional questions. And thank you to the sponsor for being willing to answer all these inquiries. I was at the public hearing, but I think the bill has been amended and I think it's better now. We are going to be waiting for the policy office to be making some rules and regulations. We're going to also be waiting for rules and regulations from OPA, which they have done in the past, timely. So I'm not that worried about that. But we heard earlier who the policy office is. These are our biggest contractors in the government of Guam, sorry, procurement people in the government of Guam outside of our autonomous agencies such as GPA and GWA, the airport and the port. But it also talks about this designating a contract, a critical procurement contract and allowing it to avail of these special rules is going to be a decision made by the chief procurement officer, the director of public works, or the governing board of the procuring agency. And I just want to talk for a minute about whether the sponsor has any concerns regarding the designation of the chief procurement officer. And the only reason why I ask that is because we've seen some flipping, or I don't know what's the word. It seems like that position is moving and it's not supposed to be by statute, it's supposed to be classified, it's supposed to be set so that that person in that position is immune from any political pressure from any governor. And it seems to have worked for years, but I'm, I'm just wondering if the, if the sponsor has any concerns regarding that at this time.
Thank you, Speaker. Senator Perez?
Yeah, so, and looking at the testimony from the chief procurement officer, she stated that it didn't seem, the $5 million threshold was enough for them to view it as it's not really applicable because I guess a lot of the procurements that they do are under $5 million. And it goes on to say in the testimony that it's most likely construction. And so that's the, the goal of this bill is to ensure that much-needed capital improvement projects, infrastructure projects are, are completed. So it didn't seem like it was really that applicable to the chief procurement officer, according to their testimony.
Thank you, Senator. Speaker Chirlohi, you still have the floor.
And so that's the gist of my questions on the bill. I mean, we've seen both sides, right? We've seen where our agencies have actually been deemed wrong, incorrect in their procurement and, and order to redo it. And so this is a big departure. And it's a big departure at the request of GPA, you know, to make a more timely procurement of some huge items or services. And, you know, the people of Guam were suffering from load shedding and other things causing power outages. But, so we want to address that. And then like one of my colleagues stated, you know, we are the government, we are the ones to address that. I'm just going to continue to weigh the, my concern that, yeah, I think if GPA is the only one that needs it, perhaps we should limit it to GPA at this point until the others come in and really justify why do they need it? Why, why are they running behind? Why did they not plan with the infrastructure money? And the infrastructure team that we have seems to be, I think it was you, Madam Vice Speaker, who had a hearing and brought them in and they reported to us how they are planning to spend that infrastructure money. And so I'm hoping that that will not become an issue. Thank you. And again, thank you to the sponsor of the bill. This type of legislation is very difficult because I know she, as well as I, weigh those things. And to make an exception in the procurement law is a really big deal. It's a, it's a big risk that we take as a government. And, but she has done the hard work, I think, to make sure that those people who are being tasked in this bill to make these decisions and to promulgate rules and regulations, that they are, they have the ability to do that. And it looks to me like all the rules will be promulgated pursuant to the AAA, the administrative adjudication law. So the legislature will have a chance to review those as well if there's any objection at that point. And we just try to make it fair. Again, we don't control who's sitting on the policy office, but, you know, we just have to trust them, that we are all looking for the, the benefit of the people of Guam. Sis, this is Massey.
You're very welcome, Speaker Chirlohi. On the main motion, I will address Senator Telo Tadegui.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I attended the public hearing and I was concerned in some areas, considering the bill is definitely needed right now. We only have about a year left in spending the ARP funding. And it was, one of the issues that I do have concerns with was being able to hear as well, you know, any appeals for projects because even though some take advantage of it to, you know, sore losers that they didn't get the contract, you know, to try and derail the project is a huge issue that we can address in this legislation. However, you know, when you're, you're changing something up that provides that mechanism of, you know, accountability, transparency, you have to pause, you know. And I believe this, the good author of this legislation did everything she could to address some of the concerns. And one of them was the courts' concerns by taking out the courts' part in this whole, in this legislation here. And I read the courts' comments, you know, how the delay would be, almost a year it would take for them to actually address the concern. And like we mentioned earlier, this funding, similar to the ARA funding, I mean, the ARP funding that was done a few years ago where we had this money and we had to expend it as quickly as possible. And I think there were measures that were put in place just for that. Now we're spreading it to other agencies to utilize, GWA, GPA, the Port Authority, by moving those, that process to just eliminating it to PUC. That's one bottleneck that we can address. The Attorney General's Office has, seems to be another area of a bottleneck. And we're trying to address that one as well. And I think this bill does do that. It all boils down to timeframe. You know, a year from now is not that much time that we have. So this bill is very important and is needed. I did mention during the public hearing, when I talked to the public auditor, you know, it was included here that it would, within 90 days of the effective date of action, that they will promulgate rules and regulations. I asked if it could be shorter. I mean, we, again, we are on, you know how fat time flies. I mean, next thing you know, we're already in September, October, a year from now. So I'd like to make just an amendment without having to change or, you know, write it down to see if my colleagues are okay with this, but changing on page five where it says 90 days and just change that to 60 days. And it was even mentioned by the public auditor, he could even do it in 30 days, you know, if he'd like. So I'm trying to be more realistic in, in this and just lowering it down to 60 days. He had no issues with it on the public auditor. And again, it's just changing 90 days to 60 days. That's my amendment.
Thank you, Senator Tadegui. And we're going to save a tree on this one. Colleagues, it's on page five, line three, within 90 days, change it to 60 days. On that motion, are there anyone wishing to speak? If not, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. Senator Tadegui, you still have the floor.
Thank you. And we'll, we'll have another tree saved if we can, Madam Speaker, and that is on section three on the same page, and that's on line 14. Also change that 90 days to 60 days as well, Madam Speaker. I failed to recognize that as well.
Thank you, Senator Tadegui. I, yes. On that motion, colleagues, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. Senator Tadegui, still on the main motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I would like to ask the author if she should yield to a question that I have that was asked during the public hearing, which I think is very important. Many of this ARP funding is accompanied by also general fund money. And when there's a project that's being put in place, you know, they, they can actually mix together. There's not enough funding for this, you know, we can use a general fund. So my question to the author is, I know that this is to address ARP funding, to ensure that we spend it as quickly, but what happens when a project also includes a general fund as well?
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and ask her. Senator Perez, would you like to yield to that question as it relates to the co-mingling inclusive of the general fund? Would you like to take a second's recess? A moment's recess?[1657.61]